Good? Okay. We'll call this meeting to order.
Please stand for the collective lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is approval of the agenda.
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Noah, I forgot to ask you.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to the first item is Mustang Thrive Travel debrief.
Close enough to it, we can hear you.
We good?
We're just waiting for a power wave.
Oh.
She, I think, can you see what you're doing?
Good evening, my name is Erica Lawson, I'm one of the support advisors for the Mustang Thrive Club, also the project coordinator for the Proster Drive Coalition. I'm excited to be able to be here tonight and have you guys hear from some of our youth who just attended CADCA's National Leadership Forum in Washington DC. So they had a fantastic time and they're excited to share with you guys some of the things that they were able to learn while on this trip. And so like I said, this was about a month ago, so they've been preparing their presentation for you. And so first, what's CADCA, or what's CADCA's National Leadership Forum, what does it stand for? So it's a four-day conference, we usually fly in on Sunday, for their Monday through Thursday, come home Friday. But it is for, the four-day conference packed with multiple adult and youth-oriented classes, so that they can learn the latest strategies to fight substance misuse. There's group forums to hear from nationally-known experts and scientists. They have opportunities to speak with local and state policymakers about what is happening in our community. And just last year at CADCA, it used to be known as the Community Anti-Drug Coalition of America. But now it's known as Community-Based, Agency-Centric, Data-Driven Coalition Building Association. So there's over 3,000 individuals from all 50 states and US territories, so these girls have opportunities to network with a lot of individuals while they're there. There's multiple sectors that are involved, so youth, school employees, parents, healthcare workers, media businesses, travel communities, youth-serving organizations, religious and paternal organizations, local and state agencies, law enforcement and volunteer groups, so that's what makes up the 3,000 individuals that are usually attending this conference. One of the highlights from the week was Capitol Hill Day. It was an opportunity for, like I said, our students to go talk to our local and state legislators about the things that are happening in that community. And one of the girls talked about social media and the impact that it's having on the health of our youth. One of the girls talked about treatment and then the need for treatment in our communities when it comes to drug and alcohol use. And then one talked about the need for additional resources. So mental health social workers, mental health treatment centers to exist in our community. So as you can see, we had the opportunity to meet with Senator Maria Cantwell, along with quite a few other individuals from Washington State. That lower picture is only about half of the individuals from Washington State, we were actually the biggest group there, so we represented Washington well. So I'm gonna turn it over to Michaela, who's gonna talk about marijuana.
My name is Michaela Hattie, I'm 14 years old. So in the 1940s marijuana was encouraged from the pharmaceutical industry because it was medically useless. In the 1970s Congress passed the Control Substance Act, that labeled marijuana as a Schedule I drug. In 1998, Washington State imposed marijuana for medical use. In 2012, Washington and Colorado first two states legalized marijuana for recreational use. And just to clarify, marijuana is much more powerful today than it was 30 years ago, and the average THC levels rose from less than 1% in the mid-1970s to around 6% in 2012, to around 8.5 in 2018. Today, the average potency levels need a high at 35.45%. So the difference between THC and CBD, so both are derived from cannabis, sativa, mala. CBD has, well, 10, it has less than 0.3% THC, it's non-addictive and it's not addictive. THC is marijuana, cannabis, and it has more than 0.3% THC percentage, it's non-addictive and it is not addictive. So the chemical breakdown, THC has the same molecular structure as the body's natural endocannabinoids, specifically one of the types of endocannabinoids, and nannamide. Well, the THC and nannamide molecules are so similar that the THC can trick your brain and bind to CB1 receptors and block normal neurological function. Also, well, endocannabinoids are chemical neurotransmitters that send messages to, well, between the nerves and cells, and the body sends them as needed, so taking marijuana can mess with your natural, like, flow in your body. So as you can see, the brain's natural chemicals, well, okay. So where it's circled are where the nannamide or THC binds the receptors, and so as you can see, they are identical. And the endocannabinoids, some ECS, cover the stress levels, energy balance, mood, memory, appetite, and immune protection. So they're some pretty important things in your body. So in 2021, 35.4% of young adults from 18 to 25 years old, around 11.8 million people, reported using marijuana in the past year. In 2022, 30.7% of 12 graders reported using marijuana in the past year, and 6.3% said they didn't. In 2022, nearly 20.6% of 12 graders reported they faked marijuana in the past year, and 2.1% said they didn't. To really address this problem and go to a different store, we should really find out why you've used some. Some of the main answers to why you've used were experimentation, social enhancement, boredom, peer pressure from friends, family, and like just culture and social media to cope with challenges and just because it's accessible to them, like maybe their parents did, or they just, or it's just like other kids at their school had it, it's just easy for them. So the ways marijuana can affect our brain are vast. Some examples include the prefrontal cortex, making decisions, reasoning, social behavior, and impulse control, and overall function. And marijuana increases impulsiveness and reduces judgmental behaviors, obviously that's not competition. The amigdala is responsible for emotions and anxiety, and marijuana can stop people from eating. The basal ganglia controls movement, and marijuana is used to cause slower reaction time and allow for the feeling. Edibles are often deceiving the package, THC can be infused to any kind of candy or snack. One session that I went to talked about how a single gummy bear ear is. It's enough to get a substantial high already, and an entire gummy bear is just too much, it'll just greatly overwhelm your body. But of course, no one will stop at eating a gummy bear ear, especially people who are uneducated or just like, just don't know. So here's some examples, so this one says Delta A, that one's pretty obvious, it's in big old letters. But these other ones are like, you have to really be paying attention, especially the Doritos one, it's just like in the little gray. Pretty difficult unless you're really paying attention, so obviously young kids and, or just anybody to close up at a gas station unknowingly. Many different options, many different baits look like everyday options. And it becomes easier for you to hide them and use them without detection. For example, some baits look like highlighters, inhalers, pen markers, and some even look like smartwatches. So in the picture up there is, there's a smartwatch one, which is pretty crazy, and in this other corner, it's like a hoodie string, so you can like make it into anything. And it is not possible to bait marijuana with cannabis, and vaping oils can contain 60 to 90% of THC, so it's pretty high concentration. Vaping is increasing in popularity, especially with the appeal of different flavors. 81.2% of people, they say flavors are one of the main appeals. So in this top corner, that's just the picture that I pulled from the internet, obviously it has outdoor brands. But in this corner, that's like a website that I went to to get this picture. I just screenshotted it, and there's no age verification really, other than just a little pop-up when I entered the website. So it's like, are you over the age of 21? And I'm just like, yes. Like I didn't have to send a picture of my ID, nothing, I'm just good to go. Okay, so what can we do? We should definitely educate both youth and adults on how marijuana can harm our brain and bodies, so. But you know, they can make decisions for themselves. We need to help students identify their goals and help them to understand the short-term effects and consequences if they use marijuana. We need to increase awareness, increase awareness and treatment around rehabilitation. We need to teach positive coping skills for those who are already addicted, and we need to decrease youth access to marijuana and baits.
My name is Bridgette, I'm a student at Foster High School and I'm part of the Proster Drive Coalition. I would like to share with you. It's still the most commonly misused substance among youth ages 12. Plus, it's a good one.
Parents are a big old age. Adolescents are more likely to misuse alcohol if their parents provide small amounts of alcohol, have positive attitudes about drinking, engages in alcohol misuse, and has or has an alcohol use disorder. It's said that early sipping and tasting of alcohol by youth under 13 years old with parental permission predicted increased frequency and quantity of alcohol consumption and increased alcohol-related problems in late adolescence. So what can we do? We can increase child coping skills, strengthen family communication skills, and improve parent-child relationships, have frequent and age-appropriate conversations with our children about alcohol use, decrease youth access in home, so you know, like lock up your alcohol, decrease, decrease use, youth access to alcohol in stores, educate youth and adults about the dangers and risks of underage use, positive role modeling when it comes to alcohol use, limiting activities that involve alcohol, like hosting sober events, referrals to treatment, and teaching children not to use before 20.
Okay, hi everybody, my name's Violet Schwab, I'm a ninth grader and a member of Mustang Thrive here at the high school. And when I was at CADCA, I attended this really interesting session on the interconnectedness between human trafficking and social media, and I thought it was something important that I should share. So human trafficking is described as the recruitment, transportation, or harboring of people through fraud, force, or deception with the aim of exploiting them for profit. Most common type of human trafficking, as well as most prevalent in social media, is sex trafficking. As of data from 2023, 4.5 million people are victims of human trafficking, many of them being children ages 12 to 18. Social media's role, they, it's exploiting vulnerabilities. Traffickers leverage social medias, social media to prey on individuals' vulnerabilities, such as economic hardships, lack of opportunities, or personal insecurities. They present enticing offers such as lucrative job opportunities or promises of a better life, exploiting the hopes and aspirations of their targets. Often, these victims are children, specifically girls aged 12 to 18. Deceptive recruitment tactics. Through carefully crafted online personas and persuasive messaging, traffickers can create an illusion of legitimacy and trustworthiness. They may use fake business profiles or impersonate legitimate organizations to lend credibility to their offers. Trapping victims. Once victims are enticed by these false promises, traffickers employ coercion, manipulation, or threats to control and exploit them. It all starts with a picture. Victims often find themselves self-trapped in situations of forced labor, sexual exploitation, or other forms of abuse with no means of escape. Impact on the victim. Victims of trafficking are left disillusioned, traumatized, and having fallen victim to deceit and exploitation. They suffer severe physical, psychological, and emotional harm, often enduring long-lasting consequences, excuse me, consequences even after their ordeal ends. These victims are often children. Social media is not inherently bad, but it can lead to terrible things. The importance of addressing human trafficking in social media. This is a big human rights violation. Human trafficking represents a great violation of fundamental human rights, depriving individuals of their freedom and dignity. Exploitation through social media amplifies this violation, perpetuating a cycle of abuse and suffering. Amplifying the effects of social media. Social media platforms provide traffickers with unprecedented access to a vast pool of potential victims, enabling them to reach individuals across geographical boundaries. The viral nature of social media content can quickly propagate trafficking-related narratives and recruitment efforts, exacerbating the time, the problem on a global scale. Protecting potential victims. Recognizing and addressing the role of social media and human trafficking is essential for protecting vulnerable individuals from falling to, prey to exploitation. By raising awareness and promoting responsible online behavior, we can empower individuals to identify and avoid trafficking-related risks on social media platforms. Taking action against human trafficking and social media exploitation. Education and awareness. Implementing programs to educate on human trafficking and social media risks. Collaboration and advocacy. Advocating for cooperation between authorities and platforms. Technology initiatives. Supporting student-led tech projects to combat human trafficking and support and assistance, ensuring access to support services for victims of human trafficking. And mobilizing against exploitation. It's a collective responsibility. Everyone shares responsibility in combating trafficking and online exploitation in a call to action, to stay informed, vigilant, and engaged. Empowering others using knowledge and resources helps protect themselves and other people. Partnerships. Collaboration between stakeholders is crucial for effective action, and it's our job together to create a safer future and a world free from exploitation. I would just like to end this by saying thank you for giving us the opportunity to go to CADCA. It was truly a wonderful experience, and I absolutely loved it, so I just like to thank that. And then finally, I also end this with, how can you help? So attending our coalition meetings, which are every third Thursday at 8:15 AM at Bethel Church, following our social media accounts, intending and sharing our events with others, signing up to be a coalition member or volunteer, and encouraging youth to get involved in the youth clubs, or maybe supporting us with a donation. You can learn more at prosterdrive.org with the QR code right there if you're interested, so thank you.
All three of you did a great job, so thank you for representing us in Washington DC, so. Any questions, November?
Good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Question, you guys have a suggestion or idea of what you think would help educate students on marijuana use, students and families on marijuana use, underage drinking.
So. Oops, sorry. Sorry. Um, so one of the things that I also had an example for when I went to DC in my presentation there, was that we hold like a school, like school-wide, maybe separate one for the high school and one for the middle school, but like, oh man, what's it called? What? Oh, well, yeah, a campaign, but like, when everybody goes to the gym, y'all sit down.
Assembly.
Assembly, that's one, thank you. The school assembly, maybe parents can go to, separate one for parents, to meet people, to just really educate the students, just have an assembly where you really show the consequences and the effects and everything. That's one of my main ideas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great idea.
Any other question? Well, I appreciate you coming in tonight, thank you very much.
Great. I do have to leave, but.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the 55th Annual Migrant Education Conference in Portland, Sir Loret.
Gracias a todos por este tiempo para hablar con ustedes. Yo hablo en español porque nosotros aquí estamos en esta junta con los oficiales de el programa migrante PAC. We do have translators if you need them.
Yeah, because I'm not gonna.
Okay.
I wouldn't agree. You're gonna have to go a lot slower.
I would like.
No problema.
One more.
That's static. It should be on channel four.
But she said that one. Oh, clicked on.
It's on, but it's static.
It's static.
If you could just turn it down, the volume is horrible. And then. All right, and it should be on channel four. On channel. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
We good?
Yep, yes.
Otra vez gracias por su tiempo esta noche.
So I'm sorry.
Yeah, hablar en español es por teléfono, so, okay. Este, la razón nosotros aquí está en frente de ustedes es para invitar ustedes a una conferencia de la programa migrante in Portland, Oregon. Es una conferencia muy importante porque hay muchas clases para aprender cosas que ayudan las familias de personas en la programa y otras clases que ayudan padres a aprender sistemas de los distritos de escuelas. Y nosotros tenemos mucha representación de este distrito, principales o directores, padres, aquí está con nosotros ahora, y la señora Casey también. Y nosotros queremos invitar ustedes para continuar con nosotros también en esta conferencia. Este, nosotros tenemos dos posiciones para ustedes, so, yo, yo reconozco que usted tiene muchos cosas en sus vidas, pero si posible, por favor, va con nosotros en esta conferencia porque es el primero cosa en este. ¿Cómo existe establish?
Establish.
Develop.
Establecer una relación con mucha gente en su comunidad, su comunidad. Nosotros tenemos 70% latinos y españoles en esta comunidad, y es muy importante que ustedes. y es muy importante que ustedes trabajen con nosotros y nosotros trabajamos con ustedes también. Ustedes tienen preguntas? Y esta conferencia es en abril.
I have one. This is the same conference that was in San Antonio.
San Antonio, Texas, sí, sí.
Just lucky it's close.
Yeah.
Normally.
How many people do you have going with your group?
Ahora.
So there's twelve. You have two DVD, ten for sure, and then here's a DVD.
Y los dos es de ustedes. Porque tres es una meta, tres es un junta por ustedes. So.
I wish I could say I would love to go. I have to go to an attorney conference, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth, which will not be as fun or interesting.
When do you need to know by what's like the cutoff date?
Uh.
April first?
El primero día de abril.
What's that?
El primero día de abril.
I got that one. I got that one. Okay.
Y ustedes tienen preguntas para las padres o oficiales de PAC?
Would they like this?
Ustedes quieren hablar con ustedes? Ellos están aquí para comunicar con ustedes si quieres.
Maybe talk about the conference from last year. You know, we have actually a couple new. Oh.
Muchas gusto, me llamo Sandra Enriquez. Um, he vivido en este pueblo toda mi vida. Me gustaría que ustedes fueran con nosotros en una conferencia para que ustedes fueran parte de nosotros, como nosotros somos de la comunidad. Queremos que ustedes sepan de nuestros necesidades como hispanos, mexicanos, latinos que somos aquí. Nos gustaría que quien pueda ir nos acompañe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was able to attend, it was before COVID. And it was one of the, it was a great, it was a really good conference, but also a wonderful opportunity to build bridges and to build those connections with our families. It was really good.
I would. O ustedes tienen más preguntas por nosotros?
He's there.
Yes.
Yeah, they do.
Or inglés y español también.
Spanish. No one's Spanish.
Please, por favor. Es, las señora Ángeles, ella representa este distrito en SAC. Es una agencia de estado.
Say that vice committee, yeah. Um, en español me traduce. Buenas tardes, gracias por permitirme dirigirme a ustedes. Yo participé en la planeación de la Conferencia Nacional en Seattle, 2015. Aprendí mucho y empecé a conocer lo que era el programa migrante entonces. Participé en la de Portland en 2018 y me permitió conocer gente de Texas, de diferentes estados del país. Y es una oportunidad increíble de entender un poco más a la gente que se está moviendo todo el tiempo por causa de su trabajo. Hay personas que piensan que tiene que ver con migración y no es nada de eso. Es que califican al programa porque trabajan en agricultura, en pescando, o en lecherías, y porque se están moviendo por este tipo de trabajos, entran al programa migrante. La necesidad de comprender el sistema es muy grande y el programa ayuda mucho a las personas que son parte de él. Mi familia se benefició muchísimo. Nosotros tuvimos problemas adaptándonos. Y no había mucha esperanza para mi hijo menor, pero con la ayuda del programa y tutoría, él es señor senior ahorita en Utah. So, el programa es muy fuerte y nos hace entender la importancia de la educación y de las necesidades diferentes de cada persona. Los niños migrantes tienen un gap muy grande entre los niños que no se mueven. So, este programa provee esta ayuda. Y creo que ustedes entenderían un poco más cómo abordar esas necesidades porque tenemos mucha gente que está en esta situación. Y me enorgullece porque mi hija también se graduó de Utah. Y no, les he dicho más de una vez, no son brillantes, tuvieron ayuda. So, les pido lo mismo, por favor, apúyenos, apoyen a la comunidad. Y yo siempre estoy tratando de hablar por la comunidad, por esto, porque me beneficié. Y creo que todos merecen esta oportunidad. Y si en algún momento he incomodado por my email to alguna, me disculpo por la incomodidad, pero mi intención es ayudar y apoyar a mi comunidad. Y estuve en la reunión del SAC el sábado pasado porque aún no me desconecto porque quiero seguirme informando, quiero seguir apoyando. Materialmente no gano, pero si mi comunidad está mejor, yo también. Y creo que todos nos beneficiamos. Y quisiera, por favor, que realmente lo consideren. Ojalá que puedan estar ahí dos personas, ojalá que se decidan ahí. Gracias por la oportunidad.
You have any preguntas?
Thank you.
It wasn't gonna be a question. I wanted to share with everybody that you had invited me to attend by last year, the state conference by Zoom, and I learned so much about migrant students statewide and what happens. But one thing you said to me in our conversations, and it always stuck with me. So we think, we talked about a lot the last few years about learning loss during COVID. So kids were out of school and lost. And your comment just always stuck with me. It was, I hope now that parents have realized with kids being out of school and having to learn in a different way or being removed from education, that maybe they'll understand what our migrant kids have gone through because, you know, moving several schools throughout the year. And it did. I never thought about it like that before. And it's, you come to meetings all the time and you don't have kids in school anymore. Your kids have done so well going to the University of Washington. I think you're such a great advocate for your community and for learning. And you're, you know, thank you so much for your ongoing involvement. But that just always impacted me in thinking about it that way. And I just think your community is so lucky to have you.
Thank you. I shared the same thought with the State Advisory Committee and they told me to speak, be a speaker on the past year on the MEF Conference. That was by BS Zoom because they weren't allowed to, not past year, they won before. And, um, so I could share those experiences. And I think about our board, listening to us and grant us competitions. And I'm really proud that I could be the way to you and them to listen. And I say, I'm not, um, trying, or I don't know how you say it, presumiendo, I don't want, no quiero esto. I don't want that, but, um, the people realizes that it can be done if we have support. That the kid, just with the support, they can go wherever they want. And, um, the need is there. And that's why we want you to keep us leading. I said once, not to this special board, but one before, that you and us together are building this community. And we don't know much, maybe, but that's why we ask you to guide us. But we're essential too. Because parents, if they're not involved, they're not doing their part, they're not helping, and the kids are like lost. So this has to be a teamwork, you and us. And please keep inviting us and inviting us. And we're trying to be here. I, I'm gonna be there.
Thank you so much.
Well, next meeting, I'll let you know when it's the next meeting. But they're gonna speak with the superintendent twenty-nine and Diddy in April. That's why I was surprised about the conference because it's gonna be so close. But we asked petitions to come about the needs that we see in our community. And I'm gonna be doing mine. So.
You're a great advocate.
Good job, thank you.
I, I'll just add, I mean, don't apologize because, I mean, your passion for your community is something that we need. All communities need is people like you advocating and promoting our community. So don't apologize for that. That's awesome. Appreciate it.
I appreciate you saying that.
Um, April's tough, but I mean, I'll check the schedule and see what I can do. But, uh, yeah.
You don't have to let us go right now. We just wanna get started.
I appreciate it. Thank you guys.
I think we can work through that and it'd be nice. I know we couldn't do it for San Antonio, but, um, you know, maybe it gets a little closer. It might be easier. They need to have it in the winter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna lie, but.
Yeah, you know, I'll bring that up.
Honestly, for our families too, like.
Yes.
I mean.
So.
Yeah.
Um, thank you for this time and that's all we have.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. We appreciate it.
Yeah. We're gonna go finish our meeting. We paused our meeting to come to this meeting. So.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, probably need to. Yeah, you need to. I haven't either. It's like talking. Thank you.
You got it?
Yeah. Have a good night, thank you. All right, moving on, assessment of capable learners.
Uh, so assessment capable learners is, has an effect size of one in three hundreds. But there's several components that, um, it has within it. So there's several high impact effect sizes that structural strategies are part of that one in thirty-three hundreds. When it's all combined, it's all working correctly. Um, that's why the effect size is so high. So I have a couple of examples of it. Um, kind of areas that we're working on in the building. Um, this behind you is about the bilingual class and I'll go through that and I'll explain that to you. And then I have a little presentation. Maybe I should do that one and then you can shut that off first. So this one's from fourth grade. Both the bilingual program and the other class, monolingual class, both do this. And so this was on unit two. I'm gonna start with this so then you can take it. Um, so we have pre-assessment scores. Red is, well, are ones. The twos are yellow and the green is three. So the teachers are sharing this information with the students at the start of it after the pre-assessment. And then they progress monitor through that unit. Here's the post-assessment score. So all of this, all these assessments are being shared with the students. Because ultimately, just like in my position, if it's not impacting the classroom and changing instruction, then it's useless. Same with the students. If students don't have this information and know where they're at and know where they need to go, it's not gonna increase growth. It's not gonna increase learning. So both classrooms, um, are doing this. They have a big celebration. I had it on my phone, but I didn't get the video in where she takes the pre-assessment, puts it up with the post-assessment, and then they go and they cheer because they're showing so much growth. Um, not only that, there's reflections that are built in. Daily, they have the learning target and success criteria with a little reflection on it. So they're continually working through that process. And then this is the beginning of it to the end of it in a unit. Um, same thing here. This was just a different unit. We have the three. Hosts. And you'll see, um, there's one area. So when we meet in PLC, this is the information we take down. This is the data. Any area that stands out like this is the next steps for them to do in class. So they're trying to improve instruction using the data, improve instruction. But you see, um, in this one, you don't have any red, but I'll move down. And that's, that's fine. You have any questions about that?
Can you, I guess, just kind of go over what capable learners is?
Yeah, so there's, there's, there's several kind of components that are, that are in there, but it's really getting back to students being able to self-assess, self-fade. Um, peer assessments, peer grading, peer feedback. Teacher clarity is part of that, which district why we're working on the teacher clarity. The clearer a teacher is to the student, the better the student's gonna know where we're at and where we're going and what are the expectations at the end that you're looking for. For example, some of that may be rubrics. Some of them are the assessments themselves and reflecting on the assessments. So there's a lot of self-reflecting, um, some self-grading. And I'll get into that when we go into this. This was kind of what a couple of classrooms are doing just to share that information with kids. So that's why I brought that. Um, this over here is, um, part of thinking maps. So we adopted Arc, um, and this is still part of the Arc program. These are some supports. So we're really looking at those high-impact strategies, high-instructional strategies really gonna have an impact. Um, graphic organizers is very, has a high effect size. But what they did with this is called reverse mapping. So you start off with this, this is called a flea map. Um, so throughout our building, uh, starting in kindergarten, we teach them graphic organizers that match their thinking, which is a little different than what we're used to. We were used to using graphic organize to organize information. This, you pick the graphic organizer to match your thinking. So if you're comparing and contrasting, um, if you're organizing information, there's a, there's a thinking map for each of us. And then we end up teaching them how to write off the map. And really important is speaking off the map because the oral has to come before writing. So what they, what they do with this flea map is, this is, this is basically on a narrative. So you have your different events here. You have an opening, you have a closing. We use similar graphic organizers to this, uh, when we were in school. Um, now what they're doing is when they go through this and they use like a flow map, which is sequencing your story where you have your problem and you have your climax and all of that, that it ends up getting placed in these, in these events. So that map is tied to here. Um, but what they done, what they've done with this is the teacher will read part of their, um, spray that, cortex.
Yeah.
Um, and so they'll, they'll use that cortex to break the cortex down and put these in the different spots so they can take the story and end up putting in the story onto this flea map. So that's one way it's kind of modeled. What they ended up doing here is called a reverse mapping. So they, this, this is actually their story now that they typed up. And these are our peers. So you'll notice these are all color-coded, that's part of it. Um, each, each reason has a, well, this one was reasoning, so it's more, um, kind of like persuasive writing. So this one was persuasive writing, that was a narrative. So these would end up changing to your first reason, second reason, third reason. Um, and they're different colors. So your first reason is in blue, the second reason is in orange, and then the third reason is in purple. And so when they're reading somebody's, um, paper, they're looking for the first reason and that's why they're all underlined blue and then they're all underlined orange and they're all underlined purple. Not only are they providing feedback to the person that wrote this, but also strengthens their ability because they're able to see the different reasons and see what's missing. So when they go to their writing to the self-grade or self-assess, they've already done it several times. Once it's modeled, pulling it out from the cortex, using somebody else's, can I notify their reasons in there? And then they leave little sticky notes on, um, what information is still missing. So they're giving feedback to, to that specific student. You'll notice they also color-coded here from the introduction to match their different reason. Um, and then down in the conclusion, some of these are a little bit better. This one, I pulled this one because of the color. They did a really good job of highlighting the different reasons and matching it to the flea map. Um, this one, you'll notice there's, they have the same colors, but you didn't see them highlighted, but there's actually more feedback to them. So here they're saying, oh, you have the same problem. So here they're saying, oh, you have the same problem, um. You only have two reasons, ah, you're missing this, there isn't any, if you notice, there's no. They don't have any sentences there, so they're missing these, um, you need to explain your evidence. Uh, so they're providing feedback based off of the off the rubric and what's missing on the on the map. Um, this is just another example, again, feedback that the kids are giving, uh, you don't have a second reason. Um. But this one's wondering why they don't have a second reason, and and you'll notice that. Uh, this is the bilingual class, but this is now in English. So the bilingual class, they're doing it in both languages, and this one's, this this particular one is in English. So this is part of that process of really creating those capable learners, because. If you think about this, who's in control of this? Students, so they have ownership in this, you have peer feedback, um, which is, which has a. An effect size around uh fifty-one hundreds, um. Providing that feedback, but it's also reinforcing the skills that the that the student was initially learning, the student that's providing the feedback. Because they're having to look for the same thing, so when they go to look at the rubric to self-assess themselves. They should now be able to pull it apart just like they did on somebody else's, and then this was done at Parker's. Providing the feedback, she had more of them, um, but it's I just picked up the the three. So assessment capable learners are learners that know where they're at and where they need to go. What is the end goal, so um key things that we should be looking for are um rubrics. Uh, which help you establish that end goal, the more rubrics that we're using, those rubrics then students use to provide feedback to each other. It could even be checklists, especially in the younger grades, but really pushing you using rubrics in reading and also in writing. And then activities like this, so we can have a teacher that stands up in front of you and models how to write this. But that's about fifteen minutes, and then attention spans going in kids. So this puts the ownership back into their hands, they're physically working on this, and the engagement increases. Learning then increases, um, where they're really seeing what they need to look for as a learner. And that's part of that visible capable learner, is being able to visually be able to see what I need to learn and how I need to get there. And that's when it has the hundred and one and thirty-three hundreds. So this, these are only small sample sizes, um, we're not cut quite to that one in thirty-three hundreds, but these are the steps that we're taking. And part of this is from first grade all the way through fifth grade, you will see that flea map. So if I want you, I wanted you to see a little vision here, that a first grader is using this. And they're using it for their, while they only might have one detail for each thing, and that just builds as they get older. And by the time these little first graders get to fifth grade, it becomes automatic. So we're not having to reteach it every year, so we've started thinking maps last year, and. Those are the graphic organizers pieces, this year we're launching writing off those maps, the thinking maps. Um. Then diagram, okay, so that's your compare and contrast. So our kids are learning that whenever we see compare and contrast structure in reading or in writing. We are going to, in this case, the thinking maps, call it a double bubble, which is a Venn diagram. So it was automatically when they start to see that structure or know that's the writing that they're doing, that's one of the graphic organizers that they'll pull out. Automatically, and that's the goal, and they start at kindergarten with the thinking maps. Um, kindergarten with the writing is a little different because kin- almost all the kinder standards say with support. Cause the teacher's doing a lot of modeling, and then the progression of that is more release, more release, more rigor as they go, as they get older. Um, and then fifth grade, this is kind of what you see, you've seen some of the examples earlier of the writing, when we brought all the writing in. And there were fifth grade examples in that, um. So we're trying to put these these uh scaffolds in place and build that visible learning, we're not quite there yet, but these are just pieces.
Is is flea an acronym for something?
Ah, good question, I've always been called it a flea map, that's how Laurel taught it to me, so I call it the flea map, it might have. I I I mean, even like the double bubble, it doesn't, uh, I can ask, I can ask. So a couple, couple, little, couple things off of that, um. Self-feedback in itself, so you're just going along in class and you're just trying to give yourself feedback, is only thirteen. You know, Brian, you're sitting there as, you know, I'm doing great. You, you know, you ask your kids, how you doing, how was school, oh, that's great. So that's kind of like that, there's there's nothing really to weigh it against. Um, compared to if you have peer assessments, you have self or peer grading. And what's the difference, you say, well, the self-grading means that there's something they're grading themselves off of, based off of, like a rubric. Um. And then another book that we're we're jumping into is we we're actually too much, which I'll talk about a little later, cause I think I share after this anyways, but. Um, is credibility, and so how does, how does a teacher gain credibility with students? And the two ways that they gain credibility with students is trust and belief. Belief that I'm gonna learn from you. And what's the best way to to get them to believe in you, by showing them growth? That students know that they are growing, they know where they are, where they need to get to, and they can see themselves growing. That is what's gonna build efficacy in the classroom, that that belief in the teacher. You have a question? Yeah.
Is it like an afternoon project, a couple days, went to work or?
Yeah, I would, I would say they probably, um. When you do these high impacts, so this is the struggle that happens. This is the struggle that happens, and it happens every day, I actually just talked about this with staff, can I go into this a little bit?
Go for it.
Okay, okay. You, the number one thing that you'll hear from teachers, it used to be materials. It used to be that, especially when the Common Core came out and it all changed, we were way behind. And we don't have the materials, we always have to look for materials, now it's time. And what we're trying to do is narrow that down, I want you actually to do less. But when you do something, I want it to be powerful. Spend time on this, that's gonna move kids, spend less time talking to them, that's not gonna move kids. So today, we just, we took, we, I took a, we're going through a math workshop book. And I took a fifth grade lesson um in math, and I gave it to them, and I asked them, alright. Everybody says you don't have enough time, so what are you gonna do out of this lesson? I mean, what are you gonna spend your time on, there's, there's just too much in there, and we narrowed it down to one problem. But you dig deeper into it, the part of it is, we have to increase discourse, we have to increase reasoning and judging in the reasoning of others. Um, and reasoning ourselves, it's that deeper thinking. And, and so. The time issue is big, but we have to build the capacity in the teachers to understand. Let's cut this down and dig deeper into it, so we're not trying to cover every single problem. I can tell if a kid understands something or not within a couple problems, I don't need ten or twelve. And I can really cut down on that if I get a a problem that's gonna require them to explain. A little bit more, or I go around and hear what they're thinking about it, and that's the goal, I could care less about the answer, I wanna know what you're thinking. And so we're really trying to pull those tasks out and those questions out, to really get at the kids and how they're thinking. And um, that, like I said, the activity today was taking a whole lesson that they see every day. Because we don't have time to go through the whole thing. And using formatative assessments and and u- using questions and tasks that are really gonna bring out discourse, reasoning. Um. And making them really dig deeper and think about what's going on with mathematics, and that's just bad, but it also applies to E L A.
Even though this type of um learning activity looks like it takes a lot of time, it does, but the fact that they're doing.
No, that's what I was.
From little to big, by the time they're older, they don't. They won't have to do all of this, like the the time is there, cause they already know it becomes automatic. So now, it took you the time early on in the front-loading, but it saves time in the long run, and the kids are more skilled.
It's some of it, some of it is progression over time, so they're just seeing this in every grade level, and then it becomes common language. Some of the so- some of these other activities, yes, they take longer, and. Wh- what we're trying to do is build that capacity in teachers, so they realize this is a strategy I wanna spend time on. This is gonna have a high impact, I I can get rid of this other stuff that's really not going to. And really focusing on the things that are are the most important, um, instructional strategies and. Um. Making this visible to kids, and so that's kind of the the process, it's hard, it's one of the hardest things I had to do as as a math. Uh, teacher and as a teacher in general, it was let go. Um, let go of the ownership where I owned everything, let go of if I don't say it, you know, there's, there's this uh. I I don't even know where it comes from, but if if I'm not in front of you telling you, you can't learn it. Um, kind of thinking, and going away from that and becoming more of a facilitator was one of the hardest things that I did. Change that I made earlier in my career.
It's because it's how you were taught.
Uh, cause that's how we were taught, so we also talked about, okay, well, when we select the one problem in this math lesson to work on during this time. Now what are you doing? And then you start hearing, well, I'm kind of facilitating, I'm going around, I'm questioning, I'm I'm taking down notes with what I hear people thinking. Isn't that more important than standing up here talking to them and you have no idea? So it it's just trying to change that, um.
It's a paradigm shift.
Yeah, it's a, it's a major paradigm shift, mind shift of how we deliver the information. One of the books is, it says, don't ever say something a kid can say. Which I think is powerful, if kids can share that and and say it in front of the class, let them. Uh, I also found that kids learn from kids a lot, a lot more than. What not up in front of me telling them.
How long have you been doing this, or how long we've been doing this way?
This is, this is, this, the thinking maps uh portion, and then this is our first year with the writing on to it. Last year was our implementation of thinking maps in general, uh, matching um the graphic organizers to the thinking. Um, this is the first year we started to implement the writing.
Are they teaching this in college?
They won't need to.
I have.
Teachers, that would be nice, yeah.
It it would be, it would be.
Sure not.
Um, I would say no. They don't spend enough time in college looking at the really high-impact instructional strategies, they just don't. They would rather cover a whole bunch of things and sell a bunch of textbooks, in my opinion, than, you know, really. Um, I do, I wanna say that that the same teacher, though, during the, he did a testing. Her kids were pulling the thinking maps out on that and using it and using the flea map. And she came in with such a celebration, I mean, she was almost. Cause whenever you see somebody take it and actually apply it, I mean, that's the ultimate, right, you know, so. Um. Like I said, the scores are the scores, but the work that they're doing, it might take a little while to take effect. But I eventually it's going to, like I, I mean, the vision is the vision, it you you have kindergartners that are able to pull out different thinking maps and know them. Before they even go into first grade, and then they start to apply them in first grade all the way through. It's gonna take hold, and then they're gonna start to apply it, um, and and so that's all around the reading and the writing. And then now we're trying to duplicate that in math with the math workshop.
One question, um, so I know we're we're relatively new to this concept of. Teaching, learning, is there, are there other districts that have implemented a similar? Program or type that, you know, cause we're not gonna be able to see the vision. We're gonna see it five years down the road, but where are the schools that have implemented this in the past? That you could actually look at some of their metrics or data and say, well, this is, I mean, this is something we can see. In the future for us, I guess, here today, that.
Around around thinking maps, we have to talk to Eric about that, but I think they're gonna come see us.
The other schools.
Oh, so we're the, we're like the.
I I you could talk to him, I mean, but I I know he's brought it up. In this area, we're one of the few that are actually really digging into this and and going, but you already know who I've asked.
I know, but I probably forgot too, but I know there's outfits out there that.
Yes, there are schools that are out there that have have done amazing, amazing things.
And is there a way that we eat, and would you share that would be able to to see some of that data? From those.
I I don't know specifically about like these strategies, I um. But schools that have had an impact where they've changed. Um, which I I think I shared it in around December, there, yes, there are schools available to see.
Not around here.
Not around here.
I just, I, if it's more of a comment or a question, but um, just coming back to. Uh, conversations about the. The arc reading program and then today about the math class, I mean, the. The topic that always comes up is is we need more time, so like. Why, what what's what's this time a lot uh going to, this not allowing us to. Give more time in the heart reading program, more like your math class, like you were saying today, is there other things outside of just. Basic learning in school that is taking time away, or it's just the way class prayers are structured?
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, it's teacher clarity. So part of teacher clarity, the number one thing in teacher clarity is organization, teacher organization. That means not just going through, turning the pages and teaching the next lesson that's there. Um, it's using assessments to drive the next steps and modifying that next lesson to meet the needs of the kids. It's actually doing less, the materi- the curriculum provides you with plenty of materials.
That's the way curriculums are designed, they give you a lot.
They give you more than what you need, it's teaching, it's building the capacity in teachers to be able to identify. And organize the lessons based on the kids' needs, so you're not ending up having to do all of it. Here's an example of of the math workshop book. I give a pre-assessment, say it's on money, and I have five kids that. Can't identify coins. Would I teach that to the whole class? No, and we do. So you have the other twenty kids that already know and name coins, but we're still gonna teach the lesson. And so that's what I'm saying, using that data to plan our instruction and be organized with our instruction as we go through, um. The 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 weird thing about it is with teacher clarity, you have to spend a lot of time upfront. To organize that information, but once it's organized, it actually frees up more time. And for example, when Jesse Wilson and I, when we, I don't know if you knew this or not, well, Brian knew this, but we we taught together. We were on the same, in the same PLC, we would spend, I don't know. Several times during our our collaboration time to work on a unit beforehand, but then the unit was all done. And then we just made minor tweaks here and there based on the assessments we did every day, some of them. Um, informal, where you're just going around and you're meeting with kids and having some of them more, where they're giving you an exit ticket, there's lots of different varieties, but. Um, all of that was really intentionally planned going in, so it comes down to. Being able to let go of some of the things that are in there. Cause there is enough time, we have, this is the longest instructional day that we've had.
Mm-hmm, we have, uh, the longest instructional day elementaries ever had, we've matched it with the secondary. Um. Because it wasn't fair, we had River View had the shortest instructional day. Evans was a little longer, e- e- everything was driven by bussing, and we have to drive what we need for the ba- needs of the kids, not based on the time the buses.
Yeah.
Speaking of that, we'll be working on those bus times some Friday again.
Thank you, Kevin. Um, moving on to. Moving on to uh school retirees. Retirees Appreciation Week started Monday and is all this week. Uh, and I'm assuming I'm reading.
I can do.
I'll do it. I got the color copy. Um, so this is the State of Washington proclamation, whereas the Washington State recognizes the accom-. A cop- accomplishments of all retired school employees and. Whereas it is important to acknowledge the value of educating and assisting retirees and special. In, in meeting the special challenges retirement brings. And work to improve their general warfare and. Whereas school retirees and organizations like the Washington State School Retirees Association. Aid in advancing education by supporting high educational standards. And whereas school retire organizations such as. WSSRA promote group. And individual involvement and charitable projects and activities, sponsor scholarships and maintain interest. And participation in education and community activities and. Whereas retired educators are encouraged to remain active in the education profession through volunteer activities associated with learning, learning. Now therefore, I, James Lee Governor of the State of Washington, do hereby proclaim March eighteenth through twenty-fourth. Through the twenty-fourth of two thousand twenty, twenty-four as school retirees appreciation week. In Washington, I urge all people in our state to join me in this special observant. Don't, yes, great to all them and all the work they've done in the past to get us where we are today. Uh, moving on to surplus sale, uh, April thirteenth and June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is that all?
Hi, everybody. Um, this is still the continuation of what's in the old library now. As we are getting ready to finally get all that done, so we've just put these two dates out there. We'll start advertising them. Nothing special. We may have one small list for you at an April meeting to add to the June sup- supplies, but we just wanted to let you know what was going on.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to discussion items, uh, school building reports. Kevin, you're still in hot seat. Yeah, you need to move in anyway.
Alright, uh, so we hosted a Dr. Seuss night for the first time. Um, worked with the PTO, which was a great experience and it turned out, uh. It, it went well. They had quite a few people attend. Um, what we're working on is, like I said, we have two book studies going on. The feedback book, our specialists are working on. And then we have the math workshop book, which our um general teachers are, are working on. And then we have uh our attendance. So I don't know if you, we are, we've been doing March Madness. Turn, well, kind of like a tournament, but with attendance, the buildings are competing against each other. Um, our grade levels are competing against each other and overall as a district for the first two weeks, we had ninety-one percent attendance.
Awesome. Thank you, Kevin. John, welcome.
Well, I'm gonna tell you about Chromebooks tonight. Did you know that we have four thousand, give or take, Chromebooks in the district? Our secondary take them home, our elementary students, they stay at school. However, they are checked out to the students, so uh in our Destiny program, so if they have to take them home, they can. Uh, and then at some of the levels, they have classroom assignments, so if they need to, or they've got a, a project in the classroom at the teacher's discretion. K through five can go home if they need to. Uh, what we're working on. We're working on keeping our students safe. That is uh not a timed project, nor is it something that we will only work on some of the time. Uh, it's something that we're always doing. Uh, sometimes I make the comment that we play whack-a-mole. Uh, with trying to keep our students safe online, but I, it's, it's a, it's a huge concern for us. We used a product for a lot of years called Go Guardian to monitor our Chromebooks. For the last, we're in our third year of using Linewise. Linewise is what filters and monitors our students' Chromebooks in addition to our district firewall. Linewise is on the Chromebook, so they're filtered at home as well as here at school. Uh, the Linewise has a, has a. A uh. System, whereas administrators, we get emails or phone calls if a student's at risk. Uh, when they're using a Chromebook inappropriately. Uh, some positive things, staying on that same note. Uh, yesterday alone, I pulled some statistics. We blocked thirty-four thousand sites, give or take, yesterday alone. That doesn't sound like a positive, but it is. Because it means we're not allowing that to get to our students. It's not perfect and we play whack-a-mole a lot. Uh, which means as they, as they do hit a site, we block it, so maybe tomorrow there will be more. Um, it means we prevented that content. On the flip side, our students went to five million, three hundred and nineteen thousand sites yesterday. That sounds like a lot, but keep in mind, office in itself is like twenty sites as you hit it, so. Uh, if a student just logs into their office three sixty-five, they automatically fill up an approved list. Um, those were all mostly, the top sites were Office, iReady, YouTube, Teams, Savas. And a category labeled computing and electronics. Those are things like Starfall, EduPuzzle, things they use in the classroom.
That's great.
Thank you.
It seems like big numbers. Alright, that concludes uh tonight's meeting. Uh, we'll have a regular board meeting next Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Right here in the library workroom at six PM. There anything additional?
I just wanted to add one thing. Personal, I didn't wanna do this next week. But Yoshimi and I were contacted last week. And we have both been offered and accepted two thousand dollar. Community activist awards from the Freedom Promotion Foundation.
Very good. This is a journey. Thank you.